Without further ado, I'd like to call this meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission, meeting of September 26, 2011, to order. A quick agenda review shows that we have a whole raft of announcements tonight. And our big agenda items, other than public comment, are discussion of the commercial and use report from Hot Planning Resources, which is something that was carried over from our last meeting that we didn't get into, and then discussion of the transportation chapter. So the first order of business is to approve the minutes of September 12, 2011, our last meeting. So moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Geez.
I thought it was a good meeting. I thought it was helpful to be talking about the flood and what we can do about it.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think that's -- there's not a lot of places like this where you can just get a sort of an overview of what's going on from the town's perspective and so forth.
And to do something positive going forward.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, Carolina.
Hi, Carol.
Anything about the minutes while you're here?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed?
We're right here tonight.
The minutes have passed. Announcements, I've got a whole bunch of them and I'll make them, some of them pretty quick. At seven o'clock tonight, there's a discussion of the Tar sands pipeline. Nobody can leave here. Sorry.
Not Carolina is here, we can.
Oh, that's true. One person can leave and represent us there if so desired. But that's at the Marlboro Grad Center. So anybody that might be watching this right now who wants to go, you got?
They can't, Gary, it's not live.
Oh, it's not live? It's Memorex? Oh, okay.
It's old news.
It's what?
Old news.
Old news. It will be when they see this, right? Okay. The Tar sands will, well, whatever. This Saturday, there is a Green Buildings Open House. It starts at 10 o'clock at the?
Last? No, this Saturday.
10:01. Starts at the Abbott Building at 10 o'clock. And there are several buildings that are going to be featured.
Which is the Abbott?
Where's the Abbott?
Across from the new Co-op building, that big apartment building.
The kind of junk brown building with the restaurant.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It had to.
Looks like a Brookline, Massachusetts apartment building.
Yeah, that one. So that's the first stop on the tour. And then there's also one in Putney this Saturday of, I think, more residential properties, but I'm not positive of that.
I have more details when you're done. Well, that was part of my announcement that I was going to make.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't want to steal your thunder down on the list here.
No, no, I'll just expand a little bit on what you've said.
On October 11th and 12th is the Renewable Energy Vermont Conference. I've been to that before. It's really great and it's, all different people are there, from builders to architects to town officials, to all kinds of people, educators and so forth. And the first day is a day of small workshops and trade show-like with a whole bunch of people that are in energy businesses and agencies and things like that.
Where is it?
It's up in Burlington at the Sheridan, I think. And then the second day is bigger meetings and lots of really interesting stuff, so. 11:02, 2nd of November, Planning and Zoning Forum is from 8:30 to 4:00 in? Floryberry? No.
No.
Montpelier?
I think it's Montpelier.
Montpelier.
Yeah. Usual. Around whatever.
Yeah, okay. And there's, there're going to be sessions on economic development and town planning, energy efficiency, complete streets, state energy planning. And that sounds really interesting.
Mm-hmm.
It's a Wednesday and it's sponsored by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
And does the town pay the fee? Planning Commissioners want to go?
That's an excellent question.
You could do that.
Should we carpool?
Yeah.
You could do that, too.
Yeah, I'd like to go.
Road trip.
I just always assumed that the town was the one that didn't pay the fee, you know? Rather than us not pay the fee, the town didn't pay the fee, but I don't know if the town actually wasn't paying the fee or not.
How much is it?
The LCT members are $55 bucks for this one.
Oh, is it 55? Oh, yeah, sorry.
Because it's all day, I think. And lunch, is lunch included?
I think so, yeah.
Usually is.
And then I have a couple, three, Act 250, yeah, number 2, which is a Wednesday. I have a couple of Act 250 things that, so Rod, this CBPS Act 250 thing to replace their structure on Route 30. What I had gotten before an email was that this application for the new structure, they required a hearing because they changed it from white, from green to white. That's what I got.
It's possible.
I mean, there's this whole application.
They need an Act 250 to paint?
No, they, it's a structure that got destroyed from snow and ice, I think, and?
So under number six in the fourth description, replaced previously approved, set in two by 62.5, steel floor structure with a white floor. Set in two by 62.5, 9.6 foot high steel floor structure with a white fabric covering.
Formerly forest green. And so.
Previously approved as forest.
And so CBPS or somebody contends that the fabric will hold up better if it's white than green, which would, you know, breaks down in the UV and whatnot, so.
Whatever's inside, it'd be cooler if it was actually white.
Yeah. And so the change in color means that they had to have a hearing.
I don't know if the hearing, so much is that?
It's a hearing.
Yeah.
Well, that's what it said in the notice anyway, I don't know.
I don't know how you all change that.
Yeah.
You're going to have Carmen the pro testify?
Give her the green.
It ain't easy being white. Formerly green.
It's a little bit taller.
A little taller, yeah. But they made no bones about it, the notice of hearing was about the color. There was a long explanation of it and everything and how it wouldn't fit into the surroundings and be more noticeable from the bar fields and so forth.
I think it's going to fit in better, fit in better in seven months.
Yeah, that's true. So anyway, that's one, Act 250 notice. And then the other one is Allard Lumber. And we only got this notice because we're in a adjoining town and they are changing their location of their planer shed that they got a permit for and extending the completion date, but they were granted an administrative permit, no hearing required. So I'm just keeping my promise to let you guys know about everything that I get in the wonderful world of whatever this wonderful world is.
Okay.
So there you go.
All right.
And did you have something to add, Carolina?
Well, I just wanted to, the Northeast Sustainable Energy Association, which happens to be based in Greenfield, sponsors this Green Building and Solar Home Tour all over New England. And if people are interested in that, on the website, I put it up there on the whiteboard, Catherine pans into that. You can go, there's many, many places that are open, not just here in Brattleboro, but all over Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, so a few, and various kinds of buildings. And this is the first year that there's a large number of buildings here in Brattleboro. And the one that includes the Abbott Block is a tour, you have to be there. And it includes four buildings. It includes the Abbott Block, Rebecca Jones Dermatology Project, Holton Home, and then Jason Cooper's building out on Western Avenue. He built apartments into a barn. And so the tour that starts at 10:00 will include all those places. But in addition to that, there are other places you can go on your own. If you just click on the website, you'll see those places. And Putney is also doing a couple tours and they have maps available at the Energy Office, which is right there in downtown Putney. And it's all day Saturday, starting at 10:00, 10:00 to like 5:00.
Okay.
So that's just, and the Putney School, their new gym is actually open for that tour also. They're doing an organized tour in Putney, too, if you wanted to go there. One is at 10:00 AM and the second one is at 1:15 for a certain selected sites that you can only get into if you're on the tour. And that's the same thing with those Brattleboro sites that I listed.
How do you get on the tour? Do you have to be lead rated?
No, all different things, just if people used interesting kind of, like some people put wood pellet boilers or people converted from their, did conversions in their homes to green energy. And then others are houses that were just built from scratch to be lead or, they're not all lead, it's just anybody who does energy efficient and green building stuff.
Materials, too, not just energy?
Yeah, all of it, yep. And they have some good ones, not too far from here in Massachusetts. They have, the state of Massachusetts has a lot more incentives and built-in things that people can apply for and get. And so the homes that are there and different kinds of things, I went two years ago and toured around Amherst, Leverett, Colerain, and very interesting stuff that people have done. So all that'll be on the websites. It's a little, can be a little overwhelming because there's so many and you have to, you know, you have to pick where you want to go, but it's great. And very inspiring to see what people have done. Last year I went over to New Hampshire and did kind of wall pole Alstead-Aquorth, that, you know.
So Carolina, can you repeat the email address, read it out?
I'll read it out, okay. It's www.nesea.org and then you just click on Green Buildings Open House. And then you can, then you have to click on by state and town and you'll get your area. And some years the website's a little better than others, so I hate to say that, but anyways.
And what does NESEA stand for?
Northeast Sustainable Energy Association.
Used to stand for New England Solar Energy Association and it was in Brattleboro. It was started in Brattleboro.
Oh.
But that's how old I am. I remember when it used to be solar.
Are you?
I'm not anymore. I used to be.
Alex Wilson used to be associated with it, too, didn't he?
Yep, yep.
Indirectly.
Jeremy. Used to be on Green Street where the, where School Street goes down.
Oh, yeah.
And that house up on the, on the point there was the headquarters of the NESEA.
My neighbor.
Your neighbor, yeah, Massachusetts. It's well worth, Rebecca Jones Dermatology Office has, she's only a renter, but she did a lot of changes there, different kinds of flooring, countertops, energy in her insulation and whatnot. She was open last year during a lot of gallery walks and she had a little pamphlet on, she put together, I think you can buy it for $3 or $5, of where she went to get all her materials and why she chose them. And so it's a great reference for other people who want to do the same thing or just have that information, like paper, there's a new thing, some kind of paper to make countertops. I don't know exactly the techniques, but you know, along with granite countertops and stuff like that. And her building is actually owned by Jason Cooper and it's part of a?
District Energy.
District Energy pellet with his apartment buildings across the street.
Right.
And it's pretty amazing.
Does it insulate the pot, taking heat from one side of Ellie Street to the other?
Yeah. And in Putney, there's a Straw Bale House that's open and?
Oh, I've seen that.
Yeah. And West Hill Shop has a whole new, the bike place has a whole new solar array there and?
It's the first, yeah, zero bike shop in the United States.
Really? Yeah. So it's a great, it's a fun thing to do, very inspiring to see what people are doing because you'd never know it otherwise. And anybody wants to go, you can join me. I go and putter around with it, it's great fun. That's all, that was just my more in-depth.
Okay.
Did you want to just get the phone number or the website address after that? Hasn't formed anything?
The Renewable Energy Conference?
Oh, yeah.
Oh. No, 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 no.
No.
That last one I just gave you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Email.
Yeah. Is that yours?
Yeah.
So this is hot off the presses, right? Vermont Housing Task Force seeks those in need of housing and available housing units.
Oh, right.
It's Irene Housing Task Force, activated by the governor to work with FEMA. And they are urging anyone displaced to register with FEMA. The number to register with FEMA is 1-800-FEMA. That doesn't make sense. There's not enough letters there. So the number is 1-800-621-3362. And the website is www.disasterassistance.gov. There's information about grants and assistance and to help people find housing. And anyone who has rental housing available should contact FEMA at 866-330-5286 so that FEMA can match people with available units. And there's a, also a rental rehab program that provides funding for owners of multifamily properties that are interested in making rentals available to individuals displaced by Tropical Storm Irene. So those are the numbers. Why don't I say them one more time? The FEMA number, if you have rental housing available, is 866-330-5286. And the number to call if you need housing assistance and to, they really want everybody to register for this so they can find some help, it's 800-621-3362. So.
And I have one more announcement.
Okay.
So Wednesday night at 5:30, there'll be a meeting in this room on the mobile home units and on the local trailer parks. So that's Mountain Home and Glen Street. And there'll be state officials available and it'll be information exchange between state officials and residents.
So anybody who's a resident who wants it to be a resource for people to come and get information. Okay. Well, that's a lot more announcements than we usually have, but?
Yeah, really.
Hey, what the heck. Under Other Business, I did have one thing to put out and that is that we were speaking about a meeting with the DRB, a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the DRB. And it seems like it would be important to have that happen sooner than later, certainly before we get to the last stages of the town plan. And I don't know if you want to speak at all, Tim, about the DRB and what we talked about a little bit, you and I.
For once, I guess in my capacity to chair the DRB, we, the, the, the people would like to meet with the Planning Commission and I think further, sooner rather than later, if you press what. Not that there's any urgent issue that needs resolving, but we'd like to open up the dialogue on perhaps a number of issues. The, we realize that the commission's time, particularly working on the town plan for model is quite precious, or you don't have a lot of it. The suggestion was made at the last DRB meeting that perhaps you could attend one of our meetings because applications before our board at this point in time are fairly thin with the possible exception of flood-related permits that may come through. At present, we meet only one Monday of the month. We allocate two Mondays of the month for DRB meetings should it be necessary. We haven't, I hope we've had two meetings, probably now 12 months, maybe more than 12 months. So the possibility exists of either doing it on a normal DRB meeting, in which case we have other hearings which may or may not delay the meeting with the board, with the commission. Or perhaps we pick the alternate Monday that we're not currently meeting on, have you joined us for that meeting? The last time we did it, I believe it was almost two years ago now, we actually joined your meeting.
Correct.
Yes.
And you gave us allocated time, you know, whatever, what, 16 minutes to meet the DRB. And I felt that the discussion, the subsequent changes in timing and the outcome from it was very positive, very quick and very responsive and it would be worth doing it again. I guess, not so much a problem, but it's just a question of picking a time that was convenient to vote the commission on board and making that work.
Tim, are you, you're meeting on the first and third? Well, first or third?
First and third, the alternate, alternate weeks to your?
Yeah.
To the commission meetings. We typically only meet on the third of the month. So I could pick a first as an open meeting and there are no commitments and no public hearings. But the possibility's actually that Brian has been given clearance to warm flood-related permits for the alternate week, should he so, should, sorry, the first month, should he so, so wish and there be another one to justify it or people want to move those applications forward. With regard, one of the things that came up in our last meeting, if anybody watched us or was using, probably have seen it, the, we have one or two topics we'd like to open up. One of the most important is quality of review of subdivision regulations or to start the ball rolling. Open the discussion about subdivision regulations. To my knowledge, the last time that, or the regulations that we're working on as a town or working from as a town were last revised in 1968.
Wow.
Which are a little way back now. Certainly I know that there are, discussion of the commission that would have to be impacted on subdivision regulations. And there are amongst the DRB, members of the DRB that would very happily offer suggestions with regard to direction or the parts of subdivision regulations that we feel could benefit from the most work. Aside from subdivision regulations, we can put a list together of like the small stuff that maybe worth considering. I think last time we've got, the last meeting we dealt with 12 or 13, maybe store items to clean them up. There probably isn't anything of that magnitude at this point, but there are one or two that would bear, one or two items that we're looking at. And again, we're not looking for, you know, a meeting that produces decisions, but we're just to open the conversation up and further, you know, perhaps we could pick one thing, subdivision, subdivision regulations.
Okay, sounds great.
So take, so take, the works for both boards.
How about the first Monday in November?
I was going to say that gives us time to get it together with Tim and Brian and shake the list. If you do well.
Let me see if any of the announcements was on the first Monday in November.
And if you do well, here in the Planning Commission, we should be, we should sort of look around and discuss more of the land use chapter two, which is the one that's relevant to Tim's interests. And I think, and I'm sure you've heard us say this before, but you probably longer than you've ever been, sure. It's already an action step and a goal of the draft section of the land use plan that there be a total rewrite of the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations with the idea of aiming at shorter and be responding more effectively to a broader range of requests to take design things and build it into bulk. And in the area of subdivision regulations, incorporate complete streets language that comes to road design, which is a lot of state mandate or purpose. And also with subdivision regulations, spell out more clearly stormwater requirements that are specific to the topography of the plan to be satisfied.
So we could spend some time talking, letting you guys know.
Correct.
We actually have almost as many DRB members in this room as we have.
I mean, all of us.
This is the joint meeting.
Actually, I think they've got a forum with me. One of you has to go.
Oh, that's right.
I think, think to say, but we talked about the DRB, we talked about BUDs, OUDs, that needs to be looked at, you know, the whole zoning code you'd like. But if you were to pick one thing, you know, subdivision regulations sit out on their own right in a little self-contained package that can be reviewed, it can be, you know, we can put boundaries around it. It's not a big, you know, design status argument or discussion. And I think, I think what's more important is state regulations have changed and we are nowhere near where state regulations are. And then secondly, common practice, our practice, the DRB's practice, we don't conform to the, to the, what's the word, to the, you know, the other, you know, jodding I's and crossing T's. So the I ought to be, just like common practice, we don't, don't conform to the way they're written. And that's because the planning department, the previous chairs of the DRB have just changed over time and transitioned things, you know, it's a couple of steps that get pushed together because it really doesn't need to be done the way it stated in the regulations. So the regulations need to catch up with, you know, at the very least with one state law and two, what we're doing, what we're acting on a day-to-day basis. We sort of look at it and go, well, do we have to do this step? No. That would be really good to capture as part of that process.
Yeah, okay.
And it's, it's, it's 68, it's behind time to jump there off. So that's, that's why subdivision regulations, we know is on your agenda, would seem to be a fairly concise topic but?
Yeah.
But contained, you know, and therefore can get, you know, reviewed, discussed and moved forward.
You guys are the feet on the ground for this, basically, and it would be great to meet with you about that.
And it's a problem, too, because I think that, you know, people come to the department with applications and you read the regulations, it says do one thing and then the practices actually don't have to do it that way. And we've now done it another way for, you know, for some period of time. So it's not that that's necessarily confusing because people work through it, but the ins- but the instructions in the book should ultimately practice rather than, rather than differ from it.
Sure.
That's why we picked subdivision.
Yeah, great.
Good topic, Professor May.
So, does everybody here, it's November seventh, okay?
Yeah.
Is this a little bit, when we talked about flood stuff at the last meeting, we were talking about subdivisions not being lollipop, kind of one way in and one way out. This, this would be part of that discussion?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Topic to bring up as part of that conversation.
How many people got stranded because of that?
Yeah, that's right.
Subdivision access, what's required? Where does the emergency fit into it? I mean, just a host of things.
Yeah.
So, looks like that's okay for everybody, Rod, you know?
And I'll work with Brian and Tim to make sure that we can put together an agenda. What we might end up doing is circulating a bit of email to planning commissioners and getting it to come along as well.
Okay. And so we have to warrant it as a meeting of each, Roddy?
Be joined.
Yeah.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will there be a metal detector at the door? That's one of those things you have to check.
Are you allowing departments to attend?
It is your meeting, so your rules.
He said, he set the rules, all right. Yes. We will set the rules.
Yeah. Little brass knuckles. Okay, good, thanks, Tim.
Yeah, great.
Any other, other business? The next section is public comment. We have a couple of members of the public here. So this would be public comment, not related to the things that you can comment on in a little bit, which is the commercial land use report and transportation chapter. But if there's anything else, okay. Stand and deliver.
Tim, I'm not Chair of the DRB.
Get that on tape.
Yeah, the, I, I think, well, I watched your TV show, your reality show from two weeks ago, and I read the minutes from two, whenever it was, two of them, and I actually didn't know what last week did, or last time did. And not, not, and you are without question gonna talk about what I'm about to say, you know, as part of the commercial district thing. And if you'd like me to sit down and hold my comments until then, I will. But I have sort of one other riding feeling that I got, it's not a specific comment, it's a feeling, and that's, and it gives me some cause for, I don't know, worry, concern, I'm not sure quite what the word is. And that's the, the level of, or not the level, but the discussion that the Commission was having with the planning department, I'm not picking either or, I felt was tending towards a short-term reactive view, rather, and that the, it was impacting your discussion with regard to the long-term vision, in particular to commercial usage. And I just want to sort of, I don't know, I guess encourage the Commission to have a little bit of optimism. I mean, I really do believe the best days, the best days of this town are ahead of us, not the hopes. And the feeling I got was, oh, it's two percent depression, this has been going on for five years, and nothing actually happened out on Putney Road, and it was down, 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 down. And I can understand why you might think that way, I can understand why you might look that way, I can understand why those feelings come out. But part of the reason I'm here, I'm sure you're here, I'm sure Gary's here, is that we expect this town to succeed. We want it to succeed economically, we want it to succeed culturally, we want it to succeed in every single way. Hopefully, James, who's my half my age, wants it to succeed, because he's got kids that are going to, oh, two, sorry. He's got kids that are, that are gonna grow up here, and, you know, we should be planning for the colossal comeback. You know, this, this town is gonna bounce right back. And some of the reports, you're gonna come onto another Hook's report, I read it and go, the guy wants us to put flower boxes out, that's not where we need to go. You know, we need to make sure that the road plan gets put into Putney Road, we need to make sure the thing gets developed, we need to make sure we're ready so that we have the infrastructure when it does bounce back, which it will. We're right, ready and set for it. And I sort of felt it was just, you know, the wind-up chaos is dropping, and therefore the census, and the census, and the this, and the that, we're all pulling it down. I don't live for that, that stuff. I live for the hope, you know? And I live for making it work, and I live for, I'm here to do that, and that's why, like, that's why, that's why a lot of people here, you know, we talk about the intellectual capital in this town. It's all the sparky people that want it, are here for a reason, who want it to succeed and grow and go, and to stop talking about, oh, the next ten, fifteen years, nothing's gonna happen. And it may be that nothing happens the next ten, fifteen years, we can tell. But it's our job and responsibility to plan for it and to make it happen. So it's sort of broad, it was a feeling thing from watching the Commission TV show.
What time were you watching it?
What time?
He was watching the two AM version.
Early in the morning.
I was watching the two AM one.
Yeah.
I ran, no, I don't want it, is it loud?
Yeah.
It's whatever, whatever one that is.
Yeah.
I was so, and I did sit and watch it, you know, for good reasons.
Well, most people don't do that.
No. So I don't know, I mean, it's, I, I live, I'm pretty sad. I have a lot more hope than you guys seem to have in that meeting.
Yeah.
I have a lot more, a lot more, you know, we are going to bounce back now. Not to say that everybody made comments throughout the, it was a, it was a, there were, you know, there weren't individual comments made, but individual members of the board that were quite upbeat. But the overall feeling was, ah, we don't want roundabouts. Why? I don't know. Business, bad business, I mean, come on, guys. You know, I don't want to hear that stuff. You know, I want, I want a road system to go through there, and I want to, want to see that thing fully developed on Putney Road, and the people that come with it, and the housing that comes with it, and the next development that comes with it, and all the other stuff, changes early, of course, to make it work for the next five years, or next ten years, next fifteen years. But don't just say, we're gonna do nothing, or we're gonna take it out of the town plan because we don't think it will happen.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make it happen with you guys and the department and everybody else. And I think there's a lot of business people in town that think that way. That's why I think it, they want it to happen. We're, we're gonna pay it, not, not bootstrapping. We've had a very tough four years or five years economically, countrywide, not just practical. There are gonna be towns that come out the rear end of it that are flying and ready to go, and I want us to be part of it.
Thanks for your comment. I actually had somebody come up to me who had watched our last meeting, I forget where it was, downtown maybe, and they were really upset also, in a different kind of way than you were, but they had big concerns, and I wasn't quite sure what to do with that, except for to listen and encourage them to come and visit us and speak. So I'm glad, it was a little different than your comment, but it was definitely related to the commercial development on Putney Road and sort of the direction that the conversation was going. And this person was also very upset. So thank you for just speaking that.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. So we will, I mean, that's actually our next, next item is to talk about the commercial land use report. And so, and Sue is not here tonight, but I assume that you're gonna, you're gonna lead this discussion, Rod?
Sure. Well, in fact, everyone here has a copy of the draft report prepared by Hope Planning. Of that, of that report, not with me right now, sorry.
Here, she can take mine, I'll, I'll get there, is that okay?
It was circulated, I was just gonna try and negotiate this, it was circulated in an envelope packet, so somebody might have. Thank you, Ben. And I think initially, we had intended this to do a couple of things. What we wanted to do tonight was actually, to some extent, well, I should, I should take credit from you as a group, I, I felt like we made some progress on identifying how to go forward on the Putney Road design aspect of the Putney Road master plan, but I may actually remember it now very well.
Well, Mike, what I remember is that I probably was the dissenter and all that. So how much we want to revisit that dissent, I don't know, but.
Your dissent is unchanged, though, isn't it?
Pretty much, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I, I think, so if we want to start with Putney Road.
Not necessarily, actually, I didn't have, quite have that in mind.
All right.
I wanted to start sort of the core of the plan, and unless people were, I mean, I, I felt like, yeah, your, your view was noted, the consensus of the board was also noted, which was that there's probably more uncertainty now than there was even before Irene about where major state road projects are on the list. In the sense that, at some point, the state is gonna have to reconsider its priorities in light of the impact of Irene. So there's, there's, you know, I think it's fair to assume that at some point in the next six months, we're gonna start seeing fairly dramatic rescheduling of major state projects. The other major change that's taken place at the level of the state is, in fact, the legislature's commitment to complete streets. The level of design input on the road component of Putney Road is that there's been a concept plan developed by consultants paid for by the consultants, and they worked alongside the Putney Road Master Plan Committee for a great part of their time on the project. It's clear that the Putney Road project, as developed by the consultants, developed three scenarios or three, three different approaches. One was effectively, you know, do nothing, one was some, you know, I think two roundabouts or some roundabouts, and then the last one was an extra four roundabouts. And there's very modest.
You mean an extra three?
Four altogether.
Four altogether.
Yeah. There's actually modest differences in the cost of the no roundabout version to the maximum roundabout version. Pedestrian and bike needs were identified as part of the consultant's report. In the work that we've done with, with the consultant Roger Hope and Alan Putney Road and the same comment, it's part of the planning process. I think the thing that we've identified the most strongly is the need to encourage east-west bike pedestrian travel across Putney Road. And so the question is whether that, the, the needs of pedestrians and cyclists under those circumstances is gonna be adequately accommodated for in, so that I think the outcome was that we would encourage the state to review whatever, you know, whatever status the consultant's report has in light of the complete streets amendment. In other words, you know, review their own work. This assumes that it's still gonna be on the list, and it's still gonna get done in a reasonable timeline. The other concern that was expressed was that, given the uncertainty around the road project in terms of when it would get completed, there are interests and needs of both residents, work, well, I shouldn't say both. There's, there's interests and needs that need to be addressed now for cyclists, pedestrians, residents, workers, and property owners on Putney Road. That depending on how far out the road project is scheduled, their concerns and needs, they should be symmetric, to meet them earlier through some interim stages or some, you know, smaller scale work that should probably identify them as being prominent stakeholders.
Who decides what those things are?
The interests, the, the interests of those groups that I just identified.
Yeah, what, what initial steps should be taken?
In a very immediate sense, it would be more work to identify exactly what their interests are. But yeah, going forward, it would be, I think, you know, it's, it's been re-coagued, and it's been restripped. There are opportunities, you know, that are small and manageable in scale that could be attended to now in terms of intersection design or a variety of other things that we're taking a section of road and addressing that, that could be important, in particular, although we'd be doing it. The area of the parking lot at the old roller dome side, that's, you know, there's sort of a hundred more than a, I don't know how many, I think it's probably almost two hundred feet of frontage where the, where the roller dome is. It's basically not controlled.
They didn't, they didn't ever really come up with a good solution for that intersection, and I think of all the, it's about one point two miles from the roundabout down to the bridge, and I think that was the most problematic part, along with the rest of that stretch, that quarter mile or so.
Maybe even, even just working on that would be, would be beneficial. And it's not, it's not immediately obvious how you might do that, but that could still be a point of focus. And then I think there are sections of Putney Road on the eastern side from the corner of Landmark Drive, which is where the advanced路灯parts is, north to the Colonial, where there's a set of traffic lights that could allow pedestrian, a pedestrian crosswalk across Putney Road at that point. Would also be another focus point. And right now, there is not a crosswalk at, to control, you know, the, the lights where, you know, this is. And if it's on one side, and then on the other, there's no crosswalk.
Is there a precedent for a crosswalk on a state highway?
It would require visiting the speed limit, you would need to drop the speed limit from forty miles an hour. And, you know, these are the sort of real basic things that if you look at it during the daytime, like when I go home tonight, I'll be able to do forty miles an hour quite easily as long as the lights don't change, because I'll be the young car on it. But in time from seven AM till seven PM, it's, I think it's extremely unusual to observe vehicles traveling at forty miles an hour in the middle of the day on Saturday, thirty miles an hour seems quick. So the issue is how do you, how do you encourage the state to change the speed limit? What are the issues that they, that they would find difficult to address in changing the speed limit? If you change the speed limit down to thirty miles an hour, then you can have a crosswalk. It's one of those weird things. You can't have a crosswalk at forty because it's dangerous. So either you change the speed limit and you get a crosswalk, or you.
Even, even if there's stoplights with some kind of a.
Yeah. Yeah, because they think that if you could be doing forty, it's not enough time to stop, even though there's traffic lights. I mean, it's just one of those weird, it's not really clear to me. There are details involved in that that I'm not sharing and I can't recall, but it's one of those sort of catch twenty-two where the solution is obvious, but actually how you get to the solution is not.
The, the last time we talked about this, at the end of the conversation, I remember there being, you know, we talked about all the different options, and then at the end, it was just like, oh, well, that can't happen anyway because the town has to pay for a certain part of it? And that was unrealistic?
Yeah, that was the killjoy portion of the discussion.
I think that's where Tim might have properly done with the drink. In fact, if it was ever to happen, you should call him through another. So the, the part of the context for the consultant's plan is we know enough about the town's finances, and we now know enough about the state's finances, and we also are beginning to get a much clearer picture of state finances, such that we don't think that it's gonna be a public sector-led project of extending side streets along Putney Road. So an integral component of the Putney Road master plan was to build out a network of side streets. And so for us, it's now apparent that we would need developers to take on the capital load of constructing the roads to town standards and completing them, and then hoping that that investment. And then hoping that that investment, um, is paid out by, um, the, the income that they earn from selling the developed real estate or the improved real estate. We think that that's a highly implausible scenario, at least in five to 10 years, on the basis of what we've seen, not just here in this town, but in North New England in general. The consultant is working with their own development specialists right now, because we asked him to, as one of our comments on the report, to make that more clear. Um, so right now, the state highway department, Vitrance, operates the maintenance component as well as the major project upgrade component for Putney Road from the, um, Veterans Bridge, just near the roller dome, um, all the way to Dumstun. So the town doesn't plow that road, doesn't stripe it, it doesn't resurface it. It doesn't do any of the maintenance on the stone border, um, infrastructure. And it doesn't have, it doesn't have the resources right now to do that. So if it was, if, if the state wants to give the road to the town, which it has indicated it would most likely want to do if it built it with four or five roundabouts, then it would be this town that takes on the cost of maintenance. And the town is reluctant to do that because of the financial burden that would create.
But wouldn't that, in, assuming that it would do some aspect of beautification and all the other components that a developer would look for in, you know, density, wouldn't that in theory encourage people to develop?
It's one of those, it, it's a real chicken and egg problem. So, yeah, if, if, if either the state or the town was willing to take the gamble, and it would be a gamble, that by improving the road and then maintaining a more complicated road, real estate prices would rise and interest would rise in, in the location, and then it would become built out. That's an assumption, and it'd have to be an assumption based on cost benefit analysis and like this scenario as a development. We don't think private developers have seen that that's a worthy investment. And we don't think either the state or the town is in a situation to actually undertake that. It would be a very sizable commitment. Um, put it in context, sidewalk alone is more than $70 a foot. So the new sidewalk that was installed in front of the 99 Restaurant, that ran $21,000.
It was nowhere.
So it's, yeah, it's literally, it's like less than two minutes walking. Okay, um, so you multiply that by a thousand or more, and you begin to get what's involved. And even just adding sidewalk in an already well-established right-of-way with grass, it's already, you know, basically it was set up to install a sidewalk, it's already ready for it. There's no need to relocate posts, signs, water mains, fire hydrants, nothing was needed. It's like the concrete underground bit, um, you know.
So.
So we think, we think we've got enough information to actually say, you know, it's not likely to be the town, it's not likely to be the state. And then if it was private development, then we'd probably be seeing something by now.
Well, I, I guess, um, I was thinking we were going to do a bit more of an overview to start with.
Right. I do want to do that as well.
Yeah, uh, and why don't we do that?
Right.
And then get into the specific areas.
Right. So let's leave Putney Road till later then. But, um, so, um, in our conversations with Roger, we asked that the report be, um, situated in a context for, um, retail and commercial real estate trends. Sort of starting off, um, with the secondary market, secondary market, um, area around Brattleboro. So that's roughly in an arc going from here as far north, almost as, um, well, as far east as Keene, and then in a, in an arc a little bit further than that down through Greenfield and around, um, to the west as well. So, um, the northern boundary probably would take us to the building month, um, but not much further than that. Then situating that, what is referred to as the secondary market, in a, in a kind of a larger New England regional context, which would be Northern New England, and then even national. What we're trying to do here is establish an overview or a context for market conditions. We mean this not just for, um, Putney Road, but we, we mean this for the town as a whole. So we want to try and explore what the medium term to long-term prospects for the downtown are, uh, just as much as anything else. And we are also asking, um, for not just to focus on retail, because I think there's a, an easy slippage between commercial and retail where people end up assuming that we mean retail. And I, we actually don't. We do mean the broader category of commercial. So that could be something as disparate as office parks for, you know, research and development facilities or, um, large-scale, um, residential care facilities for older folk or, you know, a variety of categories of development that dovetail to retail. What we've observed in the literature and in discussions with Roger and Stu Annett, as well as reading the report that, that I prepared for the downtown, is a couple of things. One is that the traditional strip mall development, um, that, um, you could use to describe Putney Road and to some extent Canal Street, that the future for that form of retail activity and commercial activity is, um, is, you know, not very exciting. That, that there are some components of it, some aspects of it that, that people regard as, are likely to persist. So there's no suggestion that something like Hannaford's or Price Chugg will disappear, um, and be replaced by online shopping or, or some other alternative. But, so there is still a demand for supermarkets. They may not look like those two supermarkets do, and they may not be those two supermarket chains. But going forward for the next two, three to 20 years, there's no expectation that they will be replaced by something else or disappear. Nevertheless, the general low-density, car-focused, um, form of commercial development that is characteristic of Putney Road is likely to become increasingly difficult and not where retail activity, um, is focused. The downtown offers many opportunities for continued development. The questions that we've had, um, and, um, have gained some answers to include, um, what happens on the second through maybe the fifth floors, depending which structure you're dealing with downtown. Set the balance of, um, retail space on the first floor, the transition to offices and some apartments on the second floor through the fifth, studio space and a variety of other things. We think there's some limited development for growth and change there. Um, we think it could be facilitated by, um, improvements to, uh, the quality of street life on the, on Main Street and the neighboring streets, um, which would include the removal of the vehicle traffic and other things, the improvement of mass transit, improved bicycle parking and storage facilities, and a general shift in emphasis away from vehicular traffic movement to pedestrian movement as being the organizing thing for downtown planning. Right now, I'd say it's still, um, oriented towards the needs of vehicular traffic. But that to really be effective, that would require a real significant change in Allen and part of the select board and other bodies of the town. Um, but the fabric of the downtown is regarded as an asset that's nationally recognizable, um, and the walkability of the downtown. And by downtown, I mean as far afield as on the straight, I guess, to the west and, um, you know, the Connecticut on the east, Connecticut on the east, but, you know, a lot of change with it. So, um.
So, but right now, in the, in the space of the next five years, for instance, uh, I mean, you could, you could almost simply say that the reoccupation of the Brooks House would be, would accomplish the whole works, right?
That's right.
Well. Well, practically, if you, if you were to say in five years' time that that many businesses and that many residences were to be established or reestablished downtown, that would probably beat any stretch of time we've had, you know?
If the Brooks House is completed and reoccupied in five years, I would regard that as a really huge success. I guess.
I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I, I think, I think that's an achievable goal and think, and some level, a little bit ambitious. But, um.
Really? Ambitious? Five years?
Well.
The retail part of it really needs to be much sooner than that.
It depends on how radical a reconstruction process is. I mean, it would take more than a year for a rebuilding to rebuild the building. So, you know, that, that's, that's 18 months to, you know, two years pretty easily there.
So as a planning commission, what do, what do we do about any of this? Do we, are we trying to do, create more policy? Are we, different policy, are we changing? What are, what are, what are we?
Well, I think in terms of the report, the question, the key question is, um, you know, well, the key, the key contention is, is that downtown, uh, is a success. It's, it acknowledging the Brooks House as a setback and acknowledging the flood. But, you know, setting aside those two events, um, and which was, and that was, you know, the circumstances that the consultants did their work under for most of the time. That the level of occupancy downtown and the level of economic activity downtown was strong. And that it, um, was consistent with a lot of features that people observe across the country, associated with successful economic development strategies in successful communities. That in other words, that there's a return of, in, in, of interest to downtowns that Brattleboro has, you know, good fabric. There are some really serious issues, and I keep on bringing up, and I mean to bring up the traffic one. I think that the heavy vehicle traffic on Main Street is a major challenge to improve, you know, to a more street-oriented, um, street staple or a low line. I mean, yeah.
Uh, isn't one of the things that, when we're talking about the downtown, there's the fact that it doesn't have a master plan and it needs one. But if we talk about it in relation to the other commercial areas, um, we don't want to create a rival to the downtown. We want to assert the primacy of the downtown. And, um, while some people may see that as an expense to the other areas, I think to be true to the town, we have to think about it in those terms.
And so, yeah, so in terms of what can the planning commission do about it, what can the planning services office do about it? The major goal would be to establish as a goal in this town plan, the need for a master plan for downtown that would identify stakeholders, I mean, they're pretty clear to all, it's already, they are. And work on some of the more, um, you know, sort of obvious obstacles that are already identified. Um, but do it in the knowledge that we are making a commitment primarily to the downtown, that, that the community regards that as the, literally as the community center and that there's a lot of energy that, um, people want to have focused on the downtown. Um, and that we think that that's going to coincide with shifts and trends in the broader community, including an interest in being able to walk to and from school and work and, um, shopping activities and a variety of other things. That it's got the basic components for a, um, high-quality live-work setting that other communities have a really hard time establishing or converting to out of a much more, um, you know, if, if, the, the street scape and a fabric that's been impacted by development, um, through the 1970s and 80s in particular. So if we're, you know, I'm, I'm thinking here of other communities that are actually trying to build from the beginning what we already have as a given. Um, and so in the work in the consultant's plan, um, and the other work done by Babs' consultant, can confirm the view that the downtown is an asset that the, that Brattleboro as a community should be focusing its energy on. I think our contention would be that, um, if we were going to rank the significance of the commercial districts, we would put downtown as the first and most important commercial district.
So, um, I, I've been curious about this. I think I wrote a note in here. How is it that the other areas, excuse me, would, would compete with downtown? How, excuse me. How is it that, you know, for instance, uh, West Brattleboro would compete with downtown in, in a way to siphon, what, what are we trying to prevent? Business going to West Brattleboro or Canal Street or Putney Road?
Well, I think we were talking last week that it, it was Putney Road, that the scale of the development proposed in the former master plan for Putney Road was so large that it would be trying to assert the primacy of the downtown. It was.
Yeah, but that, that in itself is unrealistic because you, the, the parcels are so small. And unless somebody were to attain all of those parcels in a row, it, that, although it could happen, it just doesn't, even if they did, what is the likelihood of all of that happening? And not, not just all of it happening, but competing with the downtown, if the storefronts are filled, um, I, I, if you have commercial development, let's say a mixed-use building, and the downstairs is, you know, pretty much turnkey. I, I, I get that. That's different from what you have downtown. It's more difficult to build in an existing building downtown. But I don't really see it, um, I think we should encourage it. And I don't think any developer would come in, um, and start buying up all this land. And, um, I just don't see it realistically competing unless somebody came in with $200 million and said, let's build on both sides of the street. And, you know, and how realistic is that?
Well, I, I kind of think that we're on the same wavelength because it's unrealistic to think that someone's going to come in or any aggregation of people are going to come in and build a billion dollars' worth of development on Putty, Putney Road. I don't think it's realistic.
I don't think that's even, you know, I would say the best thing to do is to forget about the concept drawing and forget about all those, those numbers are really, they're just a 1% per year thing. And, and it's just a math problem, you know? It isn't, um, you know, I, I, I mean, it's not defensible and wasn't designed to be defensible, in my opinion. But the basic idea was to, as Rod said, the, you know, plaza development, that sort of thing, um, isn't exciting. It isn't a thing where you would say, boy, come to Brattleboro, we've got some of the nicest plazas around, you know? That isn't what it's going to be like. But, um, the basic idea is that you'd be able to park someplace and walk around to some different places. To me, that's the number one basic idea, other than pedestrian, well, that's pedestrian. I mean, pedestrian access, but beginning in a denser area and then, and then getting less dense on the way out and having residential on the, on the outskirts. That's the Putney Road plan.
So it sounds more like what you, what you would like would be having a form-based code for Putney Road.
That's exactly right. That's what we were working on when we got dissolved.
Is to assess, you know, the building blocks of it, rather than the overall scale and scope of it.
That's right. That's right.
So maybe we, maybe that's our recommendation.
Well, I would take that as a recommendation. But, you know, I, I guess I want to emphasize though, it can't be neither. It cannot be, it can, it can neither be that we're afraid to make it denser because it's going to compete with downtown and we reject the plaza idea. What that means is, and I, full, uh, disclosure here, I own a piece of property on Putney Road. Uh, if that property doesn't go up in value, I'm like a whole lot of other people. If that property doesn't go up in value, I'm like a whole lot of other people. We can't afford to be owners just for the fun of it, you know? It has to increase in value to some extent, you know? Which means that we have to have more economic activity. And we can't have nothing happening. You know, we can't be afraid that somehow business development on Putney Road is going to somehow, you know, downgrade the downtown for some, in some way. But we also can't stand pat, you know? So I, I mean, I think that's, I really don't think that, in this stuff, I don't think that Roger's thesis or whatever is, is a lot different from the Putney Road master plan. I mean, there's, there's a dense area, and away from the dense area, there's less dense areas, residential, which I think is important, and then industrial, commercial areas, you know? I think that where the center of the denser areas and maybe the amount of density is different. But I don't think anybody that was involved with that plan was hung up on the particular numbers or, you know, particular density or whatever, just the idea of, you know, trying to create an area that was walkable, you know, that was more livable.
So encouraging more density infill, basically, downtown is the primary goal, but then...
Well, I, I mean, well, I was speaking about Putney Road, but more infill on Putney Road because it's, it's very low density now. Even the parts that people think of as dense are not dense at all, you know? You look at them from the aerial view and they're, it's light density, you know? And very little shared parking, you know, hardly any. You can't walk from one place to another. You gotta go back out on the Putney Road. That's one of the reasons that the back roads were, is it would keep traffic off of Putney Road, you know?
So I've got a question. On Putney Road, it's probably a dumb question, but can you, can you do street parking on Putney Road if you were to slow down the speed limit? I mean, there are many highways, or whatever you want to call them, the same types of, that have the encourages, if you're doing street parking, it breaks the, you know? So, is that an option?
Street parking is a form of traffic calming.
That was an original principle in all this, and then we were sort of discouraged from thinking of doing that, you know, by Vtrans.
Why?
Because it's a state highway and you can't have that kind of parking on a state highway.
They're saying that that's the rule, or it's just not encouraged?
Except we have it on Western Avenue all the way through West.
I mean, you have it on Route 5 in downtown.
Yeah.
But, so, let me just try and take this back a little bit without wanting to sound too professorial. So, the history of planning and the history of community, you know, community change in the United States and other parts of the world, you know, circa 1960-something to now, is that many downtowns suffered as large-scale retail and other commercial activity was located outside of the downtown. So, for whatever reasons, and they're interesting and unique to Brattleboro in many ways, the downtown here survived pretty intact, as it did in other places like Northampton, Massachusetts, and a variety of other communities. In the New England setting, somewhat intact downtowns are often associated with college towns. There's a strong correlation, and there's a complicated set of factors to help explain that, including.
King has that, too.
Real estate for students and poor-quality student housing being a good combination with pizza shops on the first floor and all those kinds of complicated things, right? So, but that actually is part of the story, that that's how it got to remain fairly intact. We know already that there used to be an IGA supermarket where the Hygro parking lot is.
Green Union.
I'm sorry. It was an IGA on Putney Road, where the auto parts store is now. And we know that the old co-op store was also once a supermarket. So, you can see that there's been these, like, you know, like layers of, you know, it's like a dig, you know, it's like an archaeological dig. You can see the leftover remnants of some earlier settlement patterns being replaced by something else. Where communities allowed uncontrolled, relatively uncontrolled, large-scale retail and commercial development on their outskirts, it contributed to sprawl and it also starved off, you know, starved out activity and residential activity or land use in the downtown. Well, what the consultant's report indicates, and I mean that in the plural sense, both Roger's and Babs' work as well, is that the, you know, a key asset for Brattleboro and something that really needs to be protected and fostered and further developed is the downtown. The question is, do you have resources to do that as well as other things? And how do you apportion your commitments between one commercial district and the others? And is it appropriate, and is, does it convey the community's expectations that you would want to make the downtown the primary commercial activity, you know, location for commercial activity in the town? And I think that, in the work that the consultants done and the work that we've been doing, there is a commitment to preserving and reinforcing the primacy of the downtown. The kind of retail activity that you see, or the kind of commercial activity that you see on Putney Road and on Canal Street and on Route 9, don't bear much comparison with the kind of things that are happening downtown. And so, it's not obvious that there's a really clear competition, that if something was to be located in the downtown, then Putney Road or Canal Street would suffer or vice-versa. There is enough difference in the actual businesses that are located there now to suggest that there's not a direct competition. The question becomes, if you want to actually boost the residential population of the Putney Road district as high as the Putney Road master plan indicates that, you know, or that it presumes, then in fact, it does begin to rival the population of the downtown. And more to the point, the square footage of commercial real estate is hugely larger than the downtown, and the dense, the population density ends up being pretty close. Our concern is that we think that those are not either A, readily achievable, or B, necessarily constructive, if you want to hold on to the downtown as being the primary area of commercial development. So, to some extent, it's been a reconsideration of the master plan and thinking of it in sections. And then the last component that is now a little bit more to the foreground for us is, following on from Irene, one of the attributes of the Putney Road area is that it's incredibly flat. We know it's got stormwater drainage issues, we know it's pretty flat. It's drained by Cosby Brook, which is already on a list for impaired waters. We think that the natural physical limitations for development on Putney Road are at odds with the very broad and general and conceptual drawings that were provided as part of the master plan that showed pretty dense neighborhoods made up of three- to four-story buildings with a intricate network of side streets and a lot more impervious surface and small parcels. And we think that there's a whole host of complicated economic reasons and now some environmental reasons to explain why that might not be the preferred development route to go for the section of Putney Road, starting roughly from Town Prior Drive north to the existing roundabout, on the eastern side, and almost the same distance on the, on the western side of Putney Road. In other words, it might be preferable, even though it has a more suburban appearance, to actually develop those parcels so that they manage their stormwater on-site, so that there's adequate provision and commitment given to pedestrian and bicycle traffic. So that there is an opportunity for more mixed use, but not necessarily in the new urbanist-informed kind of stacked structures that you would associate more with large metropolitan-style development.
So you're saying two, one-story development?
I'm not saying, I'm not necessarily saying, it would be more a question of the ratio of building area to parcel area. So ironically, the example might better be something like Route 9, which is referred to somewhat whimsically as rural commercial, and the whole objective there is to preserve the rural landscape, so you end up with sometimes fairly large structures, but even larger areas of open land around them, partly as a way of accommodating the impact of stormwater and, and other issues that are present. So, I mean, I just, you know, I get the, I mean, the purpose of tonight is not to actively engage again in another kind of debate, and I can see that you're turning your nose, it's just, I think that one of the things that really comes out of looking at this, the storm event is, we haven't, you know, the Putney Road master plan doesn't actually address the topography of Putney Road at all. It just pretends that it can be built out like some, you know, busy road in Maryland somewhere. And it's just, it seems all of a sudden, from where we sit, to be inappropriate given the landscape.
Wouldn't, wouldn't development on Putney Road be more, on every level, wouldn't that be more desirable? Because it's already a bunch of parking lots and...
It doesn't have to, no, but, well, I mean...
Rather than building on space that isn't built on yet, as, as it is in West Brattleboro.
There are very large areas of very flat land with large amounts of impervious surface on Putney Road, and has a relatively low per square foot value. It pays a relatively low value in terms of assessed, in terms of property taxes. It could definitely be more intensively developed. But whether that results in a standard new urbanist kind of context, you know?
It would cost just as much to put sidewalks in there, though, right? I mean, the whole idea, pedestrian-friendly, low environmental impact, walkability, what's, what's the difference?
The point, the point that I'm making is, rather than getting in, really stuck in the details, is just to suggest that, right now, there's an assumption that the stormwater management is not an issue, whereas in fact, what we already do know is that it is an issue. And then there's a couple of different ways of addressing that. One of them is to allow more space for the stormwater to be controlled and treated on-site. Right? It doesn't have to necessarily take up a lot of area, but it ends up being a constraint. So, to get back to the original point here, the question, the question from the master, the question from the consultant's report is, or, you know, the assumption that's conveyed in the consultant's report is that the downtown remains the primary focus for commercial activity in the town in the foreseeable future. And it comes up with specific neighborhood-level, context-proven strategies for each of the other commercial districts. And the one for Putney Road acknowledges that the master plan has got some important objectives. It doesn't say too much about West Brattleboro on the basis that the zoning was recently redone in West Brattleboro. There's limited scope for further development in West Brattleboro on the basis of the zoning ordinance that's already in place. And it makes specific recommendations associated with Canal Street that largely restate the recommendations from the report that was undertaken in 2000 and that have not been implemented. And so that is to make it a more walkable and attractive neighborhood, encouraging east-west traffic across Canal Street. And making a clear distinction between travel-related services clustered around the exit ramp. So that would be between Fairground Road and the on-off exit ramp, the exit one. And having that be distinct from the area between, I guess, north of Fairground Road and where the hospital is. And there's some, there's some challenges associated with sort of the transition space that are encountered between Elm Street, which is sort of the lower edge of the urban center, and Burge Street. Some minor efforts at changing zoning and, again, making that a more pedestrian and bike-friendly stretch. I think that the sense is that that's an effort in transition to some extent, is a transition from that more dense downtown setting to a mixed residential setting, that there's been some fairly relaxed policies in the past allowing for business, home occupations and commercial businesses to locate in former homes, basically, and that it could do with some design control influence and some clearer vision.
Okay. Carolina?
Yeah. I had a couple of points I wanted to make, but what I'm really noticing is the time, and we allowed 50 minutes for this conversation, and we're already at 45. So we basically have five minutes left, and I guess I'm not clear as to where this discussion's all going, actually. It sort of seems like it's just kind of going all over the place and going nowhere at the same time.
Well, ultimately, the question is whether we're going to adopt the recommendations of the report.
Yeah. But looking to the future, also on page five of the plan, called Neighborhood Meetings, and it was really clear that there was broad agreement expressed overall to some of the same things we were talking about earlier, pedestrian sidewalks, bicycle safety, landscaping, slowing traffic. I mean, that was, all those things, I think, are things we've been talking about in general for a long time. The old Canal Street plan talks about that. And so I think those are the places to be sure that we include those things in the town plan for all districts. And the biggest thing I see from Roger's talk, which I, was, the point I wanted to make was, the, really, the change in the multiple, multiple zones on Putney Road, to look at it in a more cohesive way that really supports what we really want to see happen there, and rather having it so fragmented into so many different zones and have it better mirror what we want in the whole town. And I think, to me, that's just the simple way to look at it. And development will happen in Putney Road and, you know, there's, when we talked about West Brattleboro, we talked about preserving the rural commercial district of it, but Putney Road used to be rural also. And it has viewscapes, it has a lot of those same things, so that it's not, I mean, it used to be all agriculture. So, a kind of mixed use that we have there, but maybe just not so concentrated in the center. And I think Roger's proposals of three different zones hit that in a better way than what we had looked at, what previous people have looked at before. But I didn't want to get too bogged down, because I know we're really on time here.
Well, Gary, if you wanted to follow Carolina's lead, maybe we all just want to talk about whether we like the report and agree with the recommendations, or would like to add something to it.
That's right. Yeah, I think we, as commissioners, need to talk about that.
I, to be honest, I think, Caroline, because I would have preferred to talk less and fiddle from you, but I kind of like, zapped with these questions that I felt obligated to try and explain and lay out.
Sorry.
But, you know, and I did a couple here, too, but not that worried about the timeline to the fifth month.
I've got some observations.
Okay.
May I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I have a bunch of quick bullet points based on this topic. First of all, I see non-conflict between Putney Road and downtown. I never have two completely different environments, and a lot of that is to do with scale. Downtown cannot put a price limit. Downtown can't put an asterisk down, we're adding it to the co-op, I understand, that's on the fringes of the bottom end of the calendar. You cannot do the kind of development that could happen in actually West Brattle or even up Canal Street or whatever in the downtown. The downtown is geographically, if that's the correct word, is already developed in a way that defines itself. The kind of businesses that go into downtown, although it's going to unfortunately in downtown because of the rents and the nature of it, the funds are art galleries, what we have now. I mean, that's not to say that we have clothing stores, bagel stores, and so on and so forth. I mean, that's down. Is, are there further areas? Are there further areas on the side streets if you don't count Main or High, the immediate part of downtown? Are there further areas out like the Cross or Elliot? And a couple of other streets, Harris Place, that could get developed? Of course. And for that reason, there needs to be a plan, a master plan, whatever you said, for downtown. But it has a conflict between downtown and Putney Road. You know, to even consider it, I think it's just, you know, it's pointless. Now, whether the town, if the town has got a pot of money, it's like a million dollars, and what are we gonna spend it? Well, we're gonna spend a million downtown and none on Putney Road. That would be one thing. But I don't, I don't think that's what's really being discussed. We're trying to plan for something. Okay, next, next point is, before I go to Putney Road, complete streets. If you want a goal, turn downtown into a complete split district. I mean, the complete streets, my understanding of complete streets is you're making the street equal the car, pedestrian, the bicyclist, the shopper, the jaywalker, you're making it equal for all of them. Okay, that's the whole concept of complete streets. And you're putting in place the crosswalks, the signage, the trees, the whole thing. Downtown, if anything, is tightly driven around the car. You know, we, you know, we pedestrian part of downtown. I mean, let's turn, take the high street and just shut it down and make it pedestrian. And then we're talking about complete streets. I mean, right, you know, right now, if, if in the town plan is, if there's a line or a phrase that says, "Let's make downtown conform to the complete streets doctrine or philosophy," or whatever it is, that would be one hell of a goal. And it's gonna take more than five years, believe me. I mean, unless you really start redeveloping traffic and figuring it out. So, you know, I'm not too worried about complete streets at this point up in Putney Road or West Brack, whatever it is. Let's fix downtown. Let's fix Cedar Street. Let's fix Elm Street. Let's fix Elliot Street. Let's fix Frost Street. Let's fix the bottom of Canal Street. Let's fix what's there. I mean, it is car-centric. Look at the traffic light system we just put in there. All driven around the cars. And spent six months trying to make it work. I'd be totally, that's a sort of, is that a complete street? The next thing is, we're talking about traffic speeds. Okay, West Brack, guess what? The state just changed the speed limit all the way from Edward Hightower to 35. It got, they cut five miles. I didn't get, there was no policy debate, there was no discussion.
No, I didn't know.
There was no, there was no, "Let's do this," or "What do you think about doing this?" They just did it. So we went five, the whole thing got cut by five miles an hour, and we got no parking signs all the way up. It was just one day, about a month ago, not related to Irene, not related to...
It was before Irene.
Before Irene, all those, so, so, yeah, before. And it's 35, by the way, it's 35 all the way now to the hopback.
I didn't see...
And no parking?
You know, to get out of open space, sorry?
And no parking?
No parking down the bottom.
I didn't see that with a poster.
No parking on, no parking on Route Nine. So once you get out of the village, you get to, you get to Dollar General, there's a big no parking sign, there's another one 150 yards down, another one 150 yards down. They're putting a little P with the...
Yeah.
Those all went in a month ago, unrelated to Irene. And what we heard when we, West Brattleboro community was doing the West Brack Master Plan, there was no way that that could be changed from 40. No way.
That's right, I remember that.
There was nothing that could be changed from 40. There was no crosswalks to be had. There was the whole normal stuff, you know, that we heard. And then all of a sudden, it's changed to 35. And it's 35 to the top of the hill, or to the hopback, up into Marlborough and through, all the way, there's signs to change.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, there's some 50s further on, then you get out beyond, but a lot of it is 35 all the way, it doesn't pop up. So the conversation relating to can we change the speed on Putney Road, Tim Lee, maybe somebody can.
Yeah, really.
They just did it, and they did it, as far as I can tell, without consultation. I mean, maybe the planning department was consulting, maybe the publicists, I don't, I wasn't aware of it, just happened one day. So I kept screaming out of there, straight to 40.
I noticed it on Sunday, on Saturday for the first time, and I assumed it was a bolt to the firing.
So...
As I was doing 45 on my head.
So I can turn around at 35. Now, whether 35, that you put a crosswalk in, I don't know. Maybe it does. The next thing is rotary, to go back, to move up to Putney Road, I mean, rotary is calm traffic. The fact that people aren't very willing to...
Roundabouts, roundabouts.
Roundabouts, sorry, roundabouts. I can talk roundabouts. Keen works fantastic.
Yes.
That one they put there really, really works. That junction used to be a nightmare, a headache, you'd get hung up there. Now everybody just cruises around that rotary. There's no courses, there's no stops, it's just, it's flawless. Putney Road can be the same thing. You know, rotary is a good, they should have put a rotary in that function junction if they designed it properly. That really calls for it instead of all those lights. The thing with flood is people inherently have common sense. They don't want an accident, they just want to go.
Well, roundabouts only work if there's enough space. The one in Keen has tons of space, and that's why it works.
Sure, well...
The one at exit three here is not really...
It's a little tight.
Yeah.
And that's because we're putting, let's not get into ridiculous...
No, no, anyway.
Now, just talk about, let's talk about a little bit about economic development and what the plan is gonna call for. What businesses want, and what developers want, and what people that are investing want, they want a pretty clear situation as to what they can and can't do. Now, the DRV has already processed two applications on Putney Road. One for, so we've gone through, we've gone through our concept review with Howard Printing. Howard Printing wants to redevelop that site. They put, what, mixed-use housing or mixed-use, mixed-use, they want offices downstairs, printing that, the that, and eight apartments or nine apartments above.
Wow.
We gave them the green light. What was that based on? That was based on the Putney Road plan. What changed, okay, with their, and their consideration when they went to further look at it was the fact that, not what, not what changed, but when they originally came in, is the fact that V-Trans said, "We're putting rotary in there, please be aware of it. This is where our, this is where our rights of way are gonna be." Something that's already built, moved back off the road was the place in front of the vet, which I think is now gonna be Sunwell Auto Parts when they move out from downtown, but it was gonna be a vet's office for a while.
Oh, that's...
They, they came to us and said, "We wanna put it here to the DRV. We wanna put it this close." V-Trans made them push it back, push it back because of the rotary. So there are planning decisions, financial decisions, monetary decisions, development decisions, already happening based on...
Based on the master plan.
On Putney Road master plan. If you, you can clearly write what you like in the town plan or talk about the town plan, but people are moving forward based on the information that the state is giving them, that the town is giving them, and that is, they're not casting stone, but pretty much in place. Okay, finally, to talk about stormwater, a little bit up in Putney Road. I see that as being a non-issue, too. Agway, okay, which used to be a lake, Lake Agway, anyone that went to shop to Agway, they had huge, huge, huge water problems. Agway went through that development. They put in stormwater retention measures, stormwater under the parking lot treatment. It's as dry as it comes now. So it's easy, you know, if Agway can do it, anybody else can develop some Putney Road to do it. And I really don't see, you know, the only problem, not problem, but the only issue they had was that their bottom neighbors didn't want to put stormwater management there. You know, we had, had one particular object up.
Yeah.
Saying that, you know, "Our schoolchildren are gonna fall down into your pond and drown," and, you know, it's dangerous. Well, that's not dangerous, it worked perfectly. Um, my notes are all over the place. Yeah, I mean, complete streets. That's, that should be, I mean, there's a goal downtown, figuring out how we do that. Downtown is not in conflict, I mean, it's a different, it's a different set of businesses. It can be primary, you know, primary area, number one, but it's, it's all, it's different businesses, it's a different set of development.
Yeah. People from out of state don't come to Putney Road to see what's there. They come to visit downtown and the art galleries. They come to Route Nine going west because there's those kind of businesses. They go to Route 30 because there's the Grafton cheese. But they don't, I mean, they might get off at the Rotary at exit three, but they don't really do Putney Road, per se.
But it's, I mean, if we're looking at growth, if we're looking at economic development, what better space have we got right now in this West Brack, sure where I am? That isn't gonna sustain the types of, potentially, the housing development, potentially the mixed business development, potentially, you know, whether it's, you know, larger businesses, you know, after 20, 30, 40, 50, because there's nowhere to put that apart from Putney Road. So let's, let's, please.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah. Thanks for the insider's voice on what's happening up there, too.
Well, that's, that's what, those are the...
No, it came before the DRB. Yeah, that's good to know.
Do you want to turn it back to the other commissioners, Gary?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess if there are comprehension questions or complaints or statements in Rogers' report that you want clarification on or you want to draw attention to, let me just say, at this point, we passed on a number of minor issues to Roger that have been intended to already, and he's working on. I think the single biggest one was the one that I mentioned at the beginning, which was that we were hoping for more situating the commercial districts in Brattleboro in the context of the future, and what is, what is going on and what do they expect to see. Crucially, the emphasis there is that investment decisions of commercial property owners and commercial businesses, including retail, are gonna be the obvious key factor in determining the success of the commercial districts, all of them in their own, you know, unique way. And so we're trying to get as much information as we can on, on that. The challenge that we have, like a lot of other economic development questions that we have, is Brattleboro is so small that data collection on this level is hazardous or challenging, and, you know, and it includes some of Roger's work already on, on the type of employment and where the type of employment is, where the growth is, and what the future holds.
Was there any information on how many buildings downtown are accessible, hand-capped accessible, square footage-wise? Seems like...
That's a big issue.
Yeah, huge.
I don't, it came up as a topic of conversation. I don't think we were able to say with any certainty that more than the new bagel topics. Okay.
Isn't Andy...
Because that was an effort that they made when they did set up for it.
Could it say in the town plan that we'd like to encourage elevators, more accessible?
There was an, well, one issue was elevator access, which is okay. And another is the front step. So there's, there's a number of buildings with elevators, including, you know, the Sands store on the corner there has a lobby and has a large number of apartments, and they have elevators. So I guess from that standpoint, the apartments in that structure are disability, it can be accessed.
And the Brooks House was, too.
And the Brooks House was, too. There were some challenges with just accessing the elevators, I think, to some extent, if the Brooks House on that. It was okay, I think, was the way to say it. But for many of the other buildings, it's not just whether they have an elevator or not, it's whether it's interface with the street is wheelchair accessible. It is an issue, it is a conflict between, you know, the architecture of the 19th century and contemporary standards. It's not insurmountable, but it's definitely a...
Can we come back to the question here, please?
So, Liz, would you like to start about what you think about the recommendations?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I like this report very much. I think, I think we're lucky to have such a thoughtful review, and there were many public meetings that many of us attended where public input was welcome on each of these issues, each of these commercial districts. And other than kind of relooking at these recommendations in light of our previous meeting's discussion regarding stormwater and flooding, I would recommend that the commission recommend them as part of the new plan.
Okay. Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, I, can you come back to me?
Sure, sure. A little too changed.
Remember, too, Mr. Chair.
Well, I, I actually like the plan. I like this, this report quite a bit, and I was prepared not to, honestly, you know. And, and there's definitely things that I disagree with. One of the things that I disagree, just as sort of a worldview, probably is similar to what Tim was saying. I feel like it is, I think, in the, in the, in the name of practicality, I think, a lot of times, it seems very pessimistic and, or not very pessimistic, but it seems on the pessimistic side. And, I mean, just one, one item, I think, I'm from Western New York, and, and, you know, the things, all the, all the bad things that can happen about, you know, downtowns and strip development and everything that happen out there. And, you know, the, all the money in the town goes to Atlanta and Arkansas and, you know, goes to all the headquarters of all these, you know, multinational companies that have these big box stores and so forth. And so it's really a, it's a strip mind kind of place. And so I'm really sensitive to that. And I think that's what the possibilities of Putney Road and the Putney Road plan, I think that's the exciting thing about it, is to transform an area like that from what is seen all over the place to something else, you know? And I, I, you know, so I, I don't necessarily get that there's any excitement around that sort of thing in this report. But, you know, that's, that's the way it goes. But I would, I would ask us in general to think about, you know, the Northeast and all the challenges that the other parts of the country are facing now and will face in terms of water shortages, in terms of, you know, their wealth and their ability to absorb people and absorb wealth and have their land values go up and so forth. I think those days are coming to an end, or at least they're slowing down. Now, that's my own, that's my own idea. So, but I, I think that over time, the Northeast will become an attractive place for people to live again. Not that it's not now, but, you know, it'll be, on balance, I think, a place that people will want to move to. And I think that Brattleboro and, you know, northern New England in general could, could be the kind of place that people will like to come to, you know, like to move to. Doesn't have the classic sunbelt attraction, that's for sure. It's a harder...
Sun.
I mean, climatically and all that, you know, but, but there, we have water. You know, we have resources that other places don't have. So I would just, you know, these trends and everything, there are the 30- to 50-year trends, I would just throw out the possibility that those trends may be gonna change. And, you know, I'm the only one that thinks that, so it would be a one-person trend, but, no, but seriously, I think that we, we could find ourselves as a place that people want to move to, you know? And so I, I'm not pessimistic about Brattleboro. I'm optimistic, and I also think that we don't know what size we should be. And that's another discussing, discussion, I think, that we should have at some point, you know? I think we take as gospel, or, well, as fact, that, you know, Brattleboro has been a certain size, 11,000, give or take, for all these years. Should it be 11,000? Should we be trying to, I mean, I've brought this up before, and it seems like it's not necessarily what everybody thinks, but people outside of town, I think, are gonna start to move into town. And there is no place for people that want to move in to live. And it's conceivable that the, that the outlying towns could get a little smaller and Brattleboro could get a little bigger. And, so, but I, I don't have big issues with this report. I think it is well done. I appreciate the way it's written and the thoughtfulness that went into it. And I think that a lot of the things that are called out are things that have been brought up time and again, as Carolina said, and I think that it's, it's really good stuff. I did have a question about number two and three, the Prentice Ever Plaza stuff. You know, I don't know... You know, I don't know.
Can you see what page you?
Well, on the matrix.
The matrix? In the bag?
The list of recommendations. It says, enter into negotiations with the owner of Price Chopper Plaza and adjacent commercial buildings to redesign and improve the site's vehicular and pedestrian safety and so forth. And then to, number three, to develop new neighborhood oriented retail shops. I just don't know that the town has powers that extend like that, you know. Because if, if we did, we would have redesigned the entrance to Hannaford's a long time ago, you know. Seriously, that, I mean, that's, that's come up as something that was supposed to have been done the next time something happened there. And then the next time something happened there, it didn't happen and, you know, and that.
My understanding was the next time something happened there was going to have to happen.
Yeah, well, that happened and it didn't happen. And it happened again and it didn't happen again. So, and, and that was one of the big things at Vtrans, that was one of their big issues, was the feeding of traffic out on to Putney Road from Hannaford's. In fact, it was called out on the, on the map as an improvement that had to be done, which is weird, I mean, in a sense.
Yeah.
But, but this kind of is like that.
I'm not, I'm not sure, there are a range of things that you can negotiate, and I think in bigger, more vibrant markets, you might have more tools at your disposal. But as far as I know, no one has ever approached the owners of the Price Chopper site with anything that resembles constructive criticism on the way the parking lot functions day to day as an alternative to, as an alternative street. I mean, it's a, it's a, you know.
Do they own it, own the land or do they lease the land?
The, there's a corporation that owns the plaza and Price Chopper leases the land from them, or leases the land for their store. So it's, it's the sign up, the front, I think it's corporate stone corporations on this one. So, and it's similar to Hannaford's. Hannaford's is not owned, there's a private retail development company that owns the Hannaford Plaza. Hannaford is their key tenant, but it's not owned by Hannaford's.
Well, there's a real carrot there though, Gary. There's a real carrot in that to add a development parcel along Canal Street.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, he showed that in the.
Yeah.
Right.
Suggested that in the plan.
And even slightly more bizarrely, it turns out that what looks like this, the lane for exiting the ATM at the bank at Hannaford's is in fact supposed, is, is part of Vtrans' right of way and that's the service road. You just wouldn't necessarily have identified that part of the parking lot as the service road for Putney Road. So, yeah, I mean, I think that there's room, and I don't know really what the layout for, for the Price Chopper parking lot is within the build, which bits and what the interruptions were.
Well, whatever, I just, it sort of jumped out at me.
I don't care about living in there because I don't think it's specific. And it, it's something I think is worth investigating.
Yeah. And then the, the other thing that was number 13, which is the zoning requirement that limits commercial buildings to less than 65,000 square feet, should be revisited. I read that as nothing but heartache. And I just, you know, a lot of trees died so that thing could get rid. And it was, and, and I think in, in a lot of ways, I agree with that restriction, but I think the point is, and somewhat to what I think each of you were speaking of before, I don't, I don't think there's somebody that's going to come here and try to open a store that's, that's that large.
But if they did, isn't that where it would go?
If they did, that's where it would go, but if they did, it would go in tax free New Hampshire, you know.
Don't we want to just get rid of that restriction to be pro-business and to be poised for that type of development?
We don't have an area that has the population that can support that though.
Well, I, I just, I'm just calling it out as something that was years in the writing and a lot of, a lot of contentiousness and it doesn't mean that it shouldn't be revisited, but.
Retail or industrial, anything?
Retail.
Just retail, yeah.
Yeah. I would think that with the new economic climate and wanting to have progress, that it should be revisited and it is a recommendation of the plan that, you know, we shouldn't cross off the, you know, take off the table because we're not willing to go through the effort.
It's, it's a, I just want to point out though. I don't know if you've read that, read that ordinance, but it doesn't say that you can have buildings bigger than 65,000 square feet, but you do have to, you have to do a study, you know.
Well, I do those studies and I know it's not insurmountable.
Yeah.
But if, if the town wants to encourage development, you know, the gentleman who came to that Putney Road meeting certainly seemed adamant in favor of having a more pro-business stance by getting rid of this, it seems simple enough to do. I mean, I think the planning literature has shown, for example, that places like Walmart and so forth really don't do the damage that was originally envisioned. And, you know.
Camera lady.
In, in terms of the Walmart in this area, I think it's shown to have brought more people generally to Brattleboro than if it wasn't there.
Well, what it's, what this recommendation doesn't say is explicitly for the area that is on Putney Road. So I think that, if I can recall the way the ordinance is framed now, it's anywhere in town, because the, the requirement for an economic impact assessment came into being before the final version of rural commercial was put in place. If I remember correctly, we've got building limits in place for, for the rural commercial district. And we have physical and building limits in place for everywhere, for, for Canal Street and downtown. Right now, we have this economic impact assessment necessary for anywhere, anywhere outside effectively the rural commercial district because the rural commercial district is now the only one that has an express building size limit.
Well, I think, I think what we concluded when we wrote that was that the only place it could happen is about where it's happening now, you know, just out on that stretch on Putney Road, so.
So, okay, so, I mean.
I think that was the idea with the 65,000.
Right. And, I mean, client, you know, I think, I've been the one that frequently said that given the market, that the commercial activity in Brattleboro, particularly with reference to New Hampshire, the likelihood of a very large store is somewhat remote. But I, I actually do think it's worth revisiting. I do think it's worth making the argument that in the very long, in the medium, much longer term, if Brattleboro is to become a much more vibrant community and the population is to increase, there's no harm in identifying the one part of town where you would tolerate or accept the construction of a 65,000 square foot store on.
Sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six thousand.
Yeah.
And that Putney Road, you know, without wanting to be argumentative about it, it seems that Putney Road would be the obvious place that you would want to do that, given its infrastructure and its setting and so forth. So, you know, I, I, I tend, I'm inclined towards the argument that it's unlikely, but I don't see any reason why you shouldn't encourage that form of thinking, at least in that area. It's a big shift, it's a big shift from the planning commission's position previously, so that in itself could be a useful message to communicate.
Can we not, I have a request that we not get caught up in the big box conversation right now because we're really here to talk about.
Well, we're talking about the recommendations though, Carolina, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna, and that's one of them.
Okay.
You know, that's the only reason I brought it up.
I know, I know.
I don't want to bring up big boxes.
Yes, I know, it's very contentious and we're going to get into that right here.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the guts of it, but it's, it's whether.
Well, it's a question.
Do you agree to revisit it? Rather than take it off the table? Because your comment, and I understand why, having lived it once already, your comment was to take it off the table, what you were suggesting perhaps to take it off the table. I'm going to ask you to, to leave it in as a recommendation and revisit it. I'm not saying take 65,000 away, not just in that, but the, the, what's, what's encapsulated in that, that ordinance is honorous. And it's business anti-convective, it's promoting development, and we should look at it, soften it, remove some of the restrictions, I mean, revisit it.
Thank you.
It's only a recommendation from Roger Hock at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would just hate to see a lot of attention get put on that recommendation as a keystone of the town plan. And, you know, I'm afraid, having lived through that chapter of our lives here.
Yes.
It was not one I want to live through again, so, but that's, okay, I mean, I can make it clear what, what that is, so. Okay, anybody else? James, you got some stuff?
Tim, I'm sensitive to what you said earlier, but I disagree and I, I hate to take the role of curmudgeon here. But I just don't like this direction, the, the direction of development proposed by this plan. The reason I don't is because it seems to me that we are saying that development will happen in the fashion we planned for because we hope it does and that there will be no adverse effect on the downtown because we hope it doesn't. But I, and I know everybody has the best of intentions, especially Roger, but I just don't think that the way to develop an economy is to change the road system, especially on Putney Road where we've already had a new road system partially implemented and then blown up in the middle of it that I think had no real effect on Putney Road. In my view, the only chance for substantial development in any sector of the town is if we can get more and better consumers, whether it's people from Brattleboro or tourists. But I don't think there's going to be substantial tourist traffic up there. And I don't think that people in Brattleboro will spend substantially more money on Putney, in Putney Road simply because of reduced service time from rotaries or roundabouts, however you want to say it. I don't agree that the chance of downtown competition is minimal because downtown used to have grocery stores and drugstores that have now all but left. I mean, there's still the Indian Grocery and Hotel Pharmacy, but there used to be Rexall and the place next to the old Paramount, Lama Toucan and Crow. The movie theater moved out up to Putney Road from the Paramount. I think Brattleboro is wonderfully blessed by both a lot of tourists and locals who support certain elements of the economy. The Co-op probably being the best example of all those things coming together in one place, or maybe the Common Ground, but, you know, or the, the Brattleboro Books, places like that that are successful in downtown, I think are there because of consumer demand. But I fail to see any evidence that a prospective business would come into Putney Road where they wouldn't now because of this new road plan, or a business on Putney Road would expand where they wouldn't now because of this road plan, or there would be some other type of economic development. To me, it just seems to be based on hope. And I know, I, I hear what you're saying, Tim, that I'm basically saying, well, we shouldn't have any hope. And I guess you're right to some extent. I, I'm just afraid of spending a lot of money without more empirical data that supports And I've not seen direct connection here or in other areas like Keene or North Hampton or Amherst or Greenfield or our sort of sister towns where development has been spurred by road development. And on top of it, in those other towns, I've never seen a structure similar to what we're proposing here, which is almost like a, I don't want to say a second downtown, but a second area of intensive development. I mean, I can think of places with substantially higher populations and higher growth rate that don't sustain that. Amherst is a one center town. North Hampton is a one center town. I mean, the nearest I can think of is Hartford, Connecticut, which has that, I think it's the west side with the predominantly Jewish area with the luxurious downtown and then the main downtown. And I may be wrong, there may be something I'm not thinking of, but it seems to me like the way things develop in Northern New England is one downtown with intensive development and some strip areas or some rural commercial areas aside from that. And I, I don't understand why we think we can force it to go another way simply by changing the roads when people's demands, I don't think, will change substantially. And the last thing is, I, I don't understand why Putney having, Putney Road's good access has not supported businesses on it in the past, like the Grand Union, the JCPenney, Ames, Home Depot, London Fog, the Candlepin Bowling Alley, the Hibachi, those, and I think places like Peebles and Staples are struggling because of low turnout. I, I can't see the connection between the change in planning and how those places are going to experience success. I just, I'm not saying it won't happen, but I don't see it clearly. And my last reservation here, and I know I'm being a total downer, but the, the idea here, I think, is that the residential neighborhoods get established and then businesses that cater to them come in and start to change the character of the road. What I wonder is who's going to be that first business to cater to this neighborhood? I think about Max's moving from West Brattleboro where it was very successful, maybe the most successful restaurant in town, and being sold and moving to Putney Road and experiencing a disaster even though it had a ready-made clientele from the Colonial Motel that seems to support the tavern now. I think that it just didn't fit in with the character and people who wanted fancy dining were not content to eat on Putney Road. And I wonder how many businesses are going to be willing to take that leap, how many people will invest their savings with the hope that they can be the first in the change of character that is successful based on residential development that in my mind is not that significant because there, you know, you're talking about maybe four or five new roads and it seems to me to take a long time to populate that. All put together, I just don't see the evidence necessary to make spending this kind of money and making these kinds of changes provenant. And I don't think that there's enough evidence that they would have a substantial effect. So, I hear you, Tim. I, I hear what you're saying and you're right, but I just disagree in this particular instance without seeing more, so.
James, do you have anything else to say about the plan per se?
I think letting the big box stores in over 65,000 is probably a good idea.
Okay. Thanks, James.
Yeah.
Tim, really, you got?
Okay. I, after all the conversation today, I do think downtown should be the main focus. It's the most identifiable part, it's the part of Brattleboro that people want to be in because it's, it just feels good, you like downtown Brattleboro. The, one, one thing that I didn't see addressed in the plan was some kind of a recommendation for. for design guidelines. Putney Road, the, the buildings there, they're, they're built like crap, most of them, not all of them, of course. You know, the, these pad sites...
Except for Gary's.
Except for yours.
Yeah.
The...
Yes, Carol.